All right. City Council on Public Health, Safety, and Environment co-posted with the Committee of the Whole will meet on Wednesday, February 22, 2023, at 6:00 p.m. for the purpose of discussing with Mr. James Davis from the Bay Stateers for Natural Medicine to discuss legalizing certain plant medicines in person at the City Council chambers at 93 Washington Street, second floor via remote participation in accordance with Chapter 107 of the Act of 2022. In-person attendance of the members of the public will be permitted, and the public may also participate. Listen to and/or view this meeting while in progress via remote participation platform Zoom through one of the following ways. Members of the public and parties with a right and/or requirement to attend this meeting may access the remote participation meeting through any of the following ways. Please click on the link, the join link to the webinar, password 889466, or telephone 853-5257, toll-free 888-475-4499, webinar ID 824-41482988. Tonight, we have an order, again, just as we stated, to meet with the Bay Stateers for Natural Medicine, discuss legalizing a certain plant medicines. Tonight, for the committee, we have Councillors, Councillor Cohen, we have Councillor Merkel, Councillor McLean, and Councillor Watson felt, so no absent, and joining us from the Committee of the Whole, we have Councillor Marsillo and Councillor Presnuski. Tonight, we also have some special guests. We do have James Davis of the Bay Stateers for Natural Medicine, Dr. Miabi Shields, Ph.D. in Drug Discovery in the System of the Brain that Interacts with Cannabis, Chief Miller, Salem Police Department, and in the audience, we also have Brendan O'Connor, Cambridge Biotherapies, VP of Operations. So before we begin, we'll just give a little synopsis on what we're doing here. So this all came in through Public Health and Safety from Councillor Presnuski last year, and the intent is to bring in the Bay Stateers. The Bay Stateers are a grassroots volunteer network, ending the war on drugs and expanding affordable, equitable access to psychedelic plants and fungi like psilocybin mushrooms. Communities that have decriminalized the use of psychedelic plants and all personal controlled substance in possession at this time in the Commonwealth are Somerville, Cambridge, Northampton, and East Hampton. I want to mention, too, that this is already legally, both federally and in most states, including Massachusetts, to purchase psilocybin mushroom spores across state borders to study them under a microscope, but possession, cultivation, and ceremonies still remain illegal. I really feel that's important to tailor our own resolution. We really need to have a public discussion with our community about what direction we want to see this go into. Personally, I feel the bulk of our discussion should be on the utilization of natural plant medicines for assisted therapy. Serotonin, sorry, like psilocybin, have been proven to aid in harm reduction. According to many studies, psilocybin has shown more promise in any other model when it comes to combating addiction. Over the last couple of weeks, I've had the pleasure to speaking with Chief Miller, as well as with Dr. Shields, our district attorney, Paul Tucker, about this discussion on where we lie on enforcement. Although there has not been many incidents concerning abuse of natural plant medicines over the last 20 years, we still want to be mindful of not hindering the enforceability component of our police department. All in all, more transparency means improved public safety and access. So with that, I kind of want to start it by inviting Mr. Davis up here to give him a, so he has a presentation, I do have the PowerPoint, and then we'll follow up with Dr. Shields, and then some remarks from Chief Miller as well. So with that, James, if you could come on up. Let's see. Oops, I'm going to right up that podium.
Amazing. Thank you.
Councillor Marsillo?
Thank you. Can we just explain for a minute that the link doesn't work? And is it posted anywhere on Facebook? Because what you sent me was the presentation, not the link, so I'm having trouble here.
So at this time, we did have a glitch. If people want to listen or give comment, I would suggest the telephone link at this time. We did send a new link out that the Chief of Staff is trying to blast out on the website. I just don't know how quickly and effective that's going to be.
But did you post it?
We, no. So unfortunately, this is the issue we have.
Just to be clear, the phone number in the current agenda works?
We believe so.
Okay.
Thank you. And just in case someone wants it, we're going to read the telephone. Hopefully, it works. Telephone number is 853-5257, toll-free, or 888-475-4499, with a webinar ID of 824-41482988. An apologies for this. All good.
Make a motion for a five-minute recess.
Thank you. Second by Councillor Merkel. I have a five-minute recess. Thank you, everybody. All right. Apologies, everybody. We will start with Mr. Davis's presentation. Here we go. I don't know why it's so small, but you guys can see. All right. Mr. Davis, thank you.
Thank you, Andy. Thank you, Chief Miller, for joining us tonight. Thank you, Jeff. Thank you, Conrad. Thank you, all the members of the City Council of Salem for hosting us tonight, which will no doubt be an amazing and informative conversation about these plant medicines. My name is James Davis, and I live at 61 Montebello Street in Boston, and formerly lived at Eaton Place here in Salem just a few years ago. So glad to be back, absolutely. So I am here representing Bay Stateers for Natural Medicine. We are a group of nearly 2,000 statewide volunteers who come from practically every background that you can imagine. So a typical Bay Stateers event is someone who is struggling with anxiety, run-of-the-mill depression, and wants to just come meet people and talk about the relief that they have found with psilocybin. We also have therapists who send their clients to our events just to get educated and learn, because a lot of them either don't know enough, or they are worried about losing their license for giving professional and individualized advice about these medicines. And so we've really served as just a volunteer advocacy group, trying to get everybody from all corners and walks of life involved and speaking with our local leaders. So we have currently worked with six city councils to pass measures, including AMERSE most recently. We added one to the list, and we also passed a measure specifically for law enforcement and veterans with a city commission of Worcester, highlighting specifically how police officers, how first responders struggling with PTSD would really benefit from access to these medicines as well. So the message I'd leave is, we're volunteers who care, and we're really excited to answer any questions you may have. And here's why this matters, why we've brought you to the council chamber to talk about mushrooms tonight. A 20-year meta-analysis of clinical trials found that there are statistically significant benefits to psilocybin mushrooms. Cultures across the world have used them for nearly 8,000 years because they help people understand themselves better as people, and in the right context, sitting on a couch with a trusted friend, or pretty soon, sitting with a therapist or professional with credentialing, they can be extremely useful for seeing your life in a new way and having a new vision of yourself. It doesn't necessarily mean you're going to relive your trauma or work through just the dark stuff. It can also benefit people who are not necessarily struggling with diagnosed depression or trauma, but just are dealing with the travails of life, like we all are, reeling from a pandemic and lots of dislocation in our communities. Next slide, Andy. Thank you. And most importantly, to me, I would say, is this is a breakthrough treatment for treating addiction in our communities. I nearly lost my brother Jason to opioid overdose a few years ago, and there are countless North Shore families who are in the same situation, where these deaths of despair are now the number-one cause of Americans under the age 40. And psilocybin, a single use, has been associated with a 40% reduced risk of opiate use disorder. Ibogaine, which is a tree shrub from Western Africa, is legally available in Costa Rica, in New Zealand, in Mexico, and yet it's still very illegal here in the United States. After a single use, people have reported that their opiate addiction and alcoholism and the neuroreceptors that I, no doubt, Dr. Shields will explain to us in just a few moments, are practically reset. And this is a godsend for the families across the Commonwealth that are struggling with addiction, and it happens to be a very affordable godsend, too. Next slide, please. So this is an analysis that our team did of commonly prescribed medication-assisted treatments, including methadone, suboxone, and vivitrol. Now, these are some of the most commonly smuggled substances into prisons in the Commonwealth because they're, frankly, especially the first two, very addictive. They have a high overdose potential. We've seen in places like Boston where people line up to get methadone because it is a palliative, it helps some people, but it is still very highly addictive and trafficked in the United States. Let's just compare the cost that that imposes on our communities in terms of crime, of nuisance, of just the human cost of people struggling with addiction, to ibogaine, which a single treatment with the assistance of a nurse can be as inexpensive as $1,000 and save cities like Salem potentially hundreds of thousands of dollars for particularly troubled individuals, not even counting the human cost of losing them. Psilocybin mushrooms are extremely inexpensive to produce. In fact, one of the reasons we don't think there will be shroom shops, at least widespread, is because the marginal cost and revenue that you get from selling mushrooms is already extremely low, and a lot of people give them away if they get a grow right. So this is going to be an extremely affordable alternative for people, and it's one that demands us educate people on the best and safe ways to use it, because it's proliferating whether we're talking about it at a city council meeting or not. Next slide, please. And this also has huge implications just across the board for a Commonwealth in terms of public safety, the core mission of your wonderful committee tonight. A 2022 study of 200,000 inmates found that a single use of psilocybin was implicated in helping people turn away from violent crime, including narcotics dealing. And so this is actually a way for us to reduce crime in our communities and way for us to heal a lot of trauma that is behind those types of tendencies to begin with. Next slide, please. This is a comparison of controlled substances that was done by The Lancet. As you can see, three of the most commonly talked about psychedelics, psilocybin mushrooms, LSD, and ecstasy, in this multivariate analysis were found to have the least amount of harm. That's not to say they don't have any harm. That's not to say that they should be used willy-nilly. They should still be used at home with a trusted friend or a trusted source. And it just goes to show, though, that alcohol, probably one of the most socially destructive drugs in our communities, is available at every corner store, not quite every corner store, and cigarettes, not too far down on the list. And yet, psilocybin can help people abstain from cigarettes with a nearly 80% response rate and work through the trauma that drives addictions to these other substances. Next slide, please. I'll pause before we talk about neurological conditions a bit. One reason why I actually start this group, and it's really personal for me, is my grandfathers were veterans that served in the Pacific Theater during World War II and in Vietnam and Korea. And when those men came home, they were very good men, but they were neglectful parents because of alcoholism, because they drank away their trauma. And my mom essentially raised herself in a lot of ways because they were so addicted to alcohol. And we all know that, that that intergenerational trauma manifests in a lot of ways throughout our lives. Psilocybin, by helping people overcome these far worse substances, is a great way for us to just become better versions of ourselves, better neighbors, better parents, and better partners to our communities. So I guess I just put a pin in the addiction tab, because it's an important one to me and a lot of members of our group. Ayahuasca, as well as psilocybin, are remarkably beneficial for a lot of people who have struggled with both dementia, but also conditions like Lyme's disease and other diseases that cause neurological decay. I've noticed across these thousands of volunteers that have come to our events throughout the Commonwealth, a disproportionate amount of them have traumatic brain injuries, have Lyme's disease, and struggle with other neurological conditions. And that's not a coincidence, because the Academy of Neurology found that the only known treatment for cluster headaches, which are basically migraines that drive a lot of people to suicide, are small amounts of psilocybin and LSD. So the frontiers of the science, again, I'm going to leave that to you, Miabi, but it's very, very exciting, and it starts here, in us being able to even have conversations about these incredible plant medicines. And it suggests in our polling, both boston.com, which found 8 in 10 likely voters support decriminalizing psychedelic plants, and, you know, treating most controlled substance possession in small amounts as an issue of public health, rather than, you know, paying $15,000 using staff time to book people who just have a problem. And so we are working on state legislation that would make this possible as well. What I will say is, how we write these rules matters, and that's our reason for existence. And the reason why we go city by city in our advocacy is so that these treatments are not locked behind a lot of red tape. If there are regulations, like 5,000 pages passed in Oregon or Colorado, then a single treatment could cost about $2,000, when we just showed you. You can have a lot of the same benefits with a trusted friend at home and then seeing a therapist the week after. And a lot of desperate people will be willing to pay that much money, as much as $15,000 is what some of the companies want to get away with charging people. So it's just really important that people are educated, so if they can afford that, they're still able to access this safely, because if you put the rules up here at an unreasonable level, it doesn't stop people from doing it, it just makes it the Wild West. That's why we need to put regulations where they ought to be. Next slide, please. So what do our measures mean? Our measures mean more conversations between parents and their kids. Our measures mean more conversations between people and their doctors and their therapists. It means more choices for desperate people who have been looking for new alternatives just to give a try. And ultimately, it means more transparency, because we know from 50 years of the war on drugs that people don't listen to the law as much as they should, and that we can have a public health infrastructure that can keep people safe and make these medicines affordable and accessible. Another personal goal I'll share is that I think, in particular, law enforcement stands to benefit from this. At church, a narcotics officer with Boston PD, she's on leave because she's injured right now. Her and her husband are big inspirations in my life, with all the stories they've brought to bear from a career in law enforcement, and I've seen how, as trauma coaches to other officers, they struggle themselves. This type of work here tonight, and this type of resolution, makes it possible for us to have these conversations, so that people like Linda can explore that as an option for her trauma as well. So thank you so much for the opportunity to present. Really excited to answer questions and really excited to hear from our other speakers as well tonight.
Awesome. Thank you, Mr. Davis. So with that, since we kind of touched on law enforcement, we'll kind of switch it up if Chief Miller would like to come up and speak. And as we just talked about before, I have had a couple of meetings with Chief Miller, with Dr. Shields, and I'd just say, first off, Chief, thank you for being open to the idea, but obviously, we'd like to hear your thoughts on this. Thank you.
Thank you for having me. I think, obviously, as a career police officer, right, I'm not an expert in the chemistry of this, or even the brain effects. I have spent a considerable portion of my career enforcing narcotics laws, and I'm not apologetic about that, but I also don't see huge successes, certainly not the kind of successes that I imagined when I went into narcotics enforcement. I think, first of all, I want to thank you, Chairperson, for involving me in the conversation. I think I'm a little bit torn. Certainly, the indications that psilocybin could be helpful for opiate addiction is something that shouldn't be ignored. In looking at statistics in Salem, we lose about 20 people in Salem a year to opioid And as a guardian of public safety, that is the single greatest loss of life that is within my jurisdiction, if you will. So anything that promises to help that, even save one life, is, I think, worthwhile to look at. That being said, I'm loathe to give away any of the tools in the law enforcement toolbox. And one of them, although I think modern thinking says it shouldn't be our first tool we reach for, but one of them is making arrests. That being said, I looked at the number of arrests we've made recently for possession of psilocybin, and I was able to find in the last five years, eight, we'll say, encounters with psilocybin that the Salem Police Department was involved in. Six of them were arrests. However, in every one of those arrest situations, the purpose of the arrest was not possession of psilocybin. The psilocybin was a secondary charge. In some cases, possession of other drugs, specifically opiates, was the main cause of the arrest. In other cases, it was violence or possession of firearms. So in terms of priority, I really don't see the enforcement of laws against psilocybin as a very high priority within the Salem Police Department. That said, the other two encounters that weren't arrests were, I guess you would call them overdoses, in one case, a fellow committed suicide was found in possession of psilocybin, and in another case, a fellow had to be taken to the hospital due to, we'll say, erratic behavior. So I don't think legalizing a substance like that is without risk, but it's not, you know, I think if you weigh helping with addiction versus a few bad incidents, particularly where it's controlled, you know, the dosages are controlled by an expert, I certainly can't object to experimenting within the law in that regard. So lowering this as a priority for the Salem Police Department, I think you'd be hard-pressed to make it any lower of a priority than it already is. That said, I want to thank you again for involving me. I'm, well, I'm pleased to be a part of the conversation.
Awesome. Thank you, Chief Miller, and no, it's been a pleasure. I'm so excited how willing you are to speak about these items, and I think it's important that going forward, it's about education, and as we all know, abstinence doesn't work. It's about if, as long as we're able to educate our constituency and our residents on the dangers of any substance, I think that's going to put more people better well off than not saying anything about it. So I appreciate that. I'm sure we'll have more questions for you. At this time, I'd like to invite Dr. Shields up here to give a little presentation on who you are, what you're about, and then we'll start the fun Q and A. So apologies if this isn't going to, like, completely get large, but it's enough to see.
All right. Oh, hello?
So you got to speak right in the microphone. If you could give your address and your name as well. Thank you.
Yep, I'm Dr. Miabi Shields, and actually, my full legal name is Dr. Christina Miabi Shields, and I live at 469 Loring Avenue in Salem. And I'm going to keep it really, really short, so just, beginning, this is just my background. I actually started my political advocacy career because of James Davis and the Bay Stateers Group, back when I lived in Boston, but I am here today representing myself. And I'm here today to speak about the science behind serotoninergics, which is compounds that interact with the serotonin system, and the science behind what we do and don't know about it, and just to take questions from people who want to know anything about the pharmacology, which is what I studied. So from 2008 to 2012, I got my Bachelor of Science in Biochemistry and Molecular Biology. That's where I started my research career. I started doing drug discovery in the system that's downstream of the endocannabinoid system. You can go to the next one. I moved here to Boston in 2012. I got my Ph.D. from Northeastern University, where I studied drug discovery in the system of the brain that interacts with cannabis. So my doctorate is in the interaction at the atomic scale of these molecules with what they interact with in our brains and bodies. I studied how these molecules change the receptors and enzymes, they change the things that are in our brains and in the rest of our body, like most of the serotonin receptors are in our stomach. So I studied how those molecules will change the things inside our bodies and how that can lead to the different types of therapeutic effects. It is also what leads to the dangerous side effects and the adverse effects. Then, when I graduated 2018, I stayed in Boston for a while until I moved here in Salem, and I have been doing industry research in the cannabis and psychedelics industry, specifically for therapeutic purposes. I was looking into how to maximize the benefits while minimizing any of the risks, specifically with cannabis, just as a PSA that has to do with minimizing the amount of THC that people take in. So I think with psychedelics, there's a ton of harm reduction, and there's a ton of therapeutic benefit, and I'm here to speak a little bit about that. And so for the next slide, I'm not going to repeat anything that James said, because I stand by everything that was in that presentation. What I just want to highlight is two different papers. This first one is just a study that was done in 2015 on a huge population in the U.S. It actually was a study on just a general population, and they happened to be asking about all sorts of substance use. So in this study, they basically were looking to find a link between psychedelics use and any sort of adverse mental health effects. And what they found is that they were not able to find that link. That's not true of alcohol, that's not true of cannabis, and it's also not true of many prescription medications. So psychedelics, I read the quotes, psychedelics are not known to harm the brain or the body or organs or cause addiction or compulsive uses. Serious adverse events involving psychedelics are extremely rare. So as James said previously, it's not that they don't happen. It's possible to misuse anything. I would argue that many of us are killing ourselves with sugar. Overall, it is difficult to see how prohibition of psychedelics can be justified as a public health measure, because overall psychedelics are not very toxic. They have a big... Serious adverse events involving psychedelics are extremely rare. So, as James said previously, it's not that they don't happen. It's possible to misuse anything. I would argue that many of us are killing ourselves with sugar. Overall, it is difficult to see how prohibition of psychedelics can be justified as a public health measure because overall psychedelics are not very toxic. They have a big therapeutic benefit and their toxicity, you have to reach really, really high levels. And with these adverse effects that we're seeing, it truly is an overdose. It's a large dose. And a lot of that has to do with the community being structured and being open enough to have the education, to have these discussions and be able to talk about it. So, this is just kind of like where the large metadata is in terms of, does, like, do psychedelics actually cause, say, psychosis? I think that's something that people regularly hear, or that, I think you asked a question similar to that when we first spoke. And the answer to that is that there are many different things that cause psychosis. And there have certainly been instances in the universe with which interactions with psychedelics were to cause that. But is it statistically likely? No. And for example, Adderall and Ritalin, Concerta, Vivance, and the stimulants that we prescribe for ADHD and for attention are also linked to psychosis. And are those linked to causing psychosis in a way that is more statistically significant than psilocybin? The answer of that is yes. So, next slide, please. So, this next slide is just about the accessibility as a barrier to research and to the community of healing. So, this is why we're here having this conversation, and it's actually one of the reasons why I'm the most passionate about it as a research scientist. Because we always say that we want more research. I will never say that I'm done getting more research. I think that we will always need more research regardless of where the laws stand. That being said, there is a huge amount of promising research out there already, overwhelmingly so in a way that just does not exist with any other treatment that we currently have as an option. And in fact, if we look at the next most likely treatment to be successful, it's community-based interventions. So, AA is a perfect example of that for alcohol. AA is a community-based intervention that works very, very well in a combination. And we can't have a community-based intervention anywhere unless we have decriminalization and people feel safe to have those conversations and to build the infrastructure of community around something that isn't frowned upon, or, I mean, not even just frowned upon, that isn't completely taboo. And that's why I think the city council is incredibly important because you set that precedent for everyone else, that you're speaking for all of the constituents that are in the city. So, this is actually from my most recent publication in the Journal of Psychedelic Studies. And the study was on whether or not people would be willing to participate in psychedelic research and why they felt like psychedelic research should happen. And I'll just read the quote, "Participants held overwhelmingly positive perceptions indicating that they believed the research should be done." So, they believed the research should be done because a majority of them had a life-changing experience. And that's something that's not unique to the participants in this study. And qualitatively, because I also have a large following as a harm reduction advocate, it's not unique just in general for people who are using these medicines for therapeutic purposes. And it's not unique when we think about the traditional history of how long for thousands and thousands of years these medicines have been used for this specific type of healing. So, while access to the entheogens and experts in entheogenic practices are still limited, future studies investigating the efficacy of these formulations will help to inform policy reform and accessibility to these traditional medicines. This is what's really important to me personally because I do think that accessibility to medicine is a health equity thing. This is certainly something that is a problem in our society. Health, or, sorry, the other word, wealth buys health. And that is incredibly unfortunate. I know James touched on this in terms of like the accessibility of medicine. These studies, the participants in my studies, you know, they flew to a different country to get access to this medicine. Gwyneth Paltrow is out here getting access to this medicine, right? I mean, this is something that people are able to access, but only if they have the capital, only if they have the privilege. And that's not how health equity should be. And that's actually not how it should be when you look at the population of people who are most significantly affected by opioid substance use, by even amphetamine substance use, and also just in general, like, we're talking about who is the most affected and the most vulnerable? It's going to be the people with the least amount of privilege. And so, right now, we have a situation where only the people with the most amount of privilege are able to access this medicine. And that's also why decriminalization is important because it's a way for the access to be universal. I have one more, kind of two more slides. Hopefully, you can see that. It's pretty small. There are three different colors on this graph. I'm just, this is my last note before I can take some questions if people will have them. It's a last note on needing more research. Oh, thank you. So, as I said, I will always believe that we need more research because I think science is awesome and I always want to understand everything more. But this is just, this is publicly available data. If you go to PubMed.gov, that is where the government kind of logs all of the scientific studies that have been happening. And so, you go to PubMed.gov and you can, you know, type in a search term. It's very similar to Google. And it will give you a data sheet of how many publications, how many scientific publications happen per year for that search term. So, in green, which is the green arrows at the very left, the reason why it starts in 1840 is because cannabis, the very first publication that is cited by the U.S. federal government, happened in 1840. Although, I think the very first mention of cannabis in formal science was done by the father of molecular biology in the 1600s. So, the first publication was there, and you can see it's pretty slow, but then it ramps up. The green line is the big one. It's the largest one. We've had the most cannabis research within the last few years. And if you see kind of where 1996 is, that's where that ramp really started to gain that exponential curve. And 1996 is when California went medical for cannabis. And that's when people started being able to research it. Then, the next line is the purple line, although it looks kind of blue there. That starts in 1946. That is the first publication for psychedelics that has been done. And actually, that line maintains its height a little bit higher. And then, there is a peak where there has been a vast increase in psychedelic research in the last recent years, highly likely due to the city decriminalization ordinances and the state decriminalization ordinances that have recently passed. And then, just for context, that red line right there, which starts in 1982, that is the total number of studies that have been done on Ambien or Zolpidem, which is a very, very common sleep medication that people use for insomnia. And so, you can see the red line barely, but it is there in the bottom. So, I'm just, you know, giving context to how much research has been done, how much research needs to be done. I will always say there needs to be more research. However, I do think that we're looking at weighing like risks, rewards, net benefits, and relative understandings of molecules that we have been almost intentionally deceived by, depending on the profitability of those molecules. So, one last thing. This is just the total numbers of publications, and I actually can't read that because my eyesight's bad, but it's about 35,000 for cannabis publications. There's 33,000 psychedelics publications, and there's 3,000 Ambien publications. And I would be not biased to not mention that one of the reasons why there are not that many Ambien publications is because pharmaceutical companies do hide a lot of their research. They don't encourage sharing their research with the public because of the profitability of the molecules. So, that is one of the reasons why there is not as much research on Ambien. Prozac or Flexatine, which is outside of its patentability already, it has more publications done on it, has about 16,000 publications. So, yes, that's it. Thank you. Oh, and thank you for having me, and thank you for listening. It's been a pleasure.
Awesome. Thank you, Dr. Shields. And at this time, I'd like to open it up to any other counselors that have questions. Counselor Cohen.
Thank you, Chair Varela. I'm not sure who to ask this question to, so I'm going to throw it at James first. And my question is this. So, in the event that we move to a place where people could purchase psilocybin legally, whether it's in Salem or Massachusetts, and you can draw from one of the communities that's past this, would it be a similar model to the cannabis where you would have regulated, you know, stores, retailers? Would it require, as cannabis started in Massachusetts, a prescription? Or, you know, right now, obviously cannabis is different, but when medical marijuana started, it was regulated through a process where people had to get a medical card?
That's an excellent question. Counselor Cohen, thank you so much for the opportunity to answer it. So, in my day job, and I'm certainly not speaking on behalf of my boss, I'll say that, I work for the Cannabis Committee of the State Legislature. And we recently had the first cannabis dispensary go under in the state of Massachusetts, in Northampton. And that's because prices of cannabis are plummeting, 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 plummeting. And this was to be expected because when it's so easy for people to grow their own, a few plants in their backyard, it's not very profitable for very long unless there's a peak interest for a little while and there's enough, you know, laws deterring people from growing their own cannabis. So, people must go to a dispensary. They don't just know somebody who has some that they grow themselves. Psilocybin is something that, on average, a user will probably use about three grams lifetime. Some people more than that. Some people will never touch it at all. And already, the price per gram of psilocybin is about $7 to $10. So, the profit, and that's not even counting your costs, the revenue that you'll get off of a single user of psilocybin is about $30 over a lifetime, way, way less than cannabis. And this is prior to us legalizing and decriminalizing more cities. So, the honest answer is I don't think it's ever going to be a very profitable commercial industry, anything like cannabis, because there's just simply not nearly as much volume, and it's way easier for people to grow by themselves at home. If you grow a single tub of mushrooms by yourself at home, first of all, it's pretty weird and fun in its own right. I'm talking lion's mane and medicinal ones as well. And once you get a grow right, you have, like even with gourmet mushrooms, a lot of them. And before they like denature, you usually end up giving them away. And so, that's the model that Bay Staters would like to see happen, where people are able to grow themselves and access this medicine in community where they're learning from their friend. They're not getting it from somebody who's trying to push a product on them. I was talking with a new friend right before this who worked in a dispensary. There's a lot of older people that walk into a dispensary. They're just given cannabis. Cannabis is a really powerful thing. It's an important thing. And we need to educate people about how it can be used effectively. But we don't see that in a dispensary run by a multi-state operation with a bunch of finance capital backing it up top. So, to round out your question, I don't believe you'll see shroom stores ever really like make much of an appearance. And it will also be incredibly difficult to regulate because it's so easy to produce, which is why education, education, education is important.
Can I ask a follow-up? Assuming that's all true, you know, I have no reason not to think that, I'm still asking, are you recommending that people get some kind of a medical card or it's just decriminalized in the sense that anyone could grow it, can use it?
I'll make two points on that. The first is there are a lot of first responders and a lot of federal employees that fall into this really terrible category with cannabis, as just an example, where in order to get a medical card or qualify for a medical card, they have to admit to having a mental health diagnosis, which can get a lot of officers in trouble. For example, actually speaking up about their trauma, it's just a sad part of that job. For example, the MBTA system is suffering from a shortage of workers because of cannabis testing. So, to answer your question, I think that if we went the medical route, it would be a big mistake because it'll cut a lot of people out from the benefits of this medicine. That being said, I do believe that there's roles for entrepreneurs like Brennan, who's joining us here tonight, to offer services that are world-class and environments and sets and settings where people can have a really comfortable experience. With Bay Staters, we have a peer facilitator network where we train people, we make sure that they do a background check, we know who they are. And then, if people reach out and they want advice, we connect them over a phone call. They're not our employees. We don't get anything out of it. But we're just there to be peer mentors so that we turn people away who are not a good fit and say, maybe psilocybin isn't the right option for you. But if they do want to have an experience, at least they're going to have an experience where they take the right amount and they're doing it at home instead of, you know, at some party where they've never done it before, they're not used to it and freak out or something like that. So, I think there will be quasi-medical models, but I hope that that's not the only model for the reasons of accessibility.
Thank you, James. Counselor Prozinski, and then Counselor Marcelo.
Thank you, Chair Varela. Not being a member of the committee. James, I've been in law enforcement, I retired from law enforcement with over 40 years' experience. And I think Chief Miller and most of the police officers in this country would agree that a lot of our work has got to do with addiction and drug behavior. And frankly, I think, again, Chief Miller would agree with me, that we've been shoveling against the tide looking for some tools to be able to help society, to help us, to be able to help them. So, my question to you would be, if this was legalized, how would you see this as a model to fight addiction? What would be your idea of how this would work? How it would be activated, distributed? Bring it down to layman's terms so the people out there can say that if this does become legal, this is how it's going to help.
That's a great question. Thank you so much, Conrad, for your service, and to you, Chief Miller, as well. All the people who, you know, are part of law enforcement families or have served in law enforcement know just that, that we have an addiction crisis in this country. And the best route, I believe, for us to normalize use of these medicines is with a group like Healthy Streets Outreach Program, who we've had a ton of conversations with. Even models like AA could be adapted to where people are given a guided psilocybin experience. Famously, the founder of Alcoholics Anonymous used LSD, which at the time, in the 1950s, was a prescribed medication, and said that this was going to transform the field of addiction care forever. And if it hadn't been criminalized, it likely would have. He ended up leaving Alcoholics Anonymous because of the political fallout that was generated against him advocating for LSD as a tool for alcohol treatment. So, I believe that the existing stakeholders in those communities, like Healthy Streets Outreach, like Tapestry, which we've worked with in western Massachusetts, are very eager to give people mentorship on how to use psilocybin, either at home or in facilities they already have. There's a lot of talk, of course, of safe consumption sites, you know, letting people use opiates so they don't get HIV, so they, you know, don't overdose because they're not with someone else. I think there's validity to that approach. As we're doing that approach, we should also have Ibogaine clinics. Like Dr. Shields was mentioning, you shouldn't have to fly to Costa Rica for that treatment. We could easily integrate that into a similar facility. So, we're not just, you know, stringing people along while they're in the midst of addiction and giving them just the opiate that their body is so desperate for, but we're actually disrupting the trauma at the heart of that addiction and then also giving them something like Ibogaine or, you know, God knows what's to discover, literally, entheogen means molecule from God, to, you know, work into conventional models of treatment. And I think that that's an exciting access point, and it's one that we've educated a lot of folks in Salem, even people who are, you know, pretty staunch abstinence-focused folks, that this has a whole lot of potential, not to just be a palliative, but to be game-changing for a lot of people, not all, but a lot of people.
Counselor Marcelo.
Sorry, one second. I just was going to say, I think this would be a really great time for Brennan to explain his model because the model that Brennan uses in his clinics would answer that question in one regard.
So, we will? I guess I'm going to answer, get to your question, and then I'm going to hopefully get to you before public comment.
Yeah, I feel like it's exactly that question, is your model, like, your model I trust.
Thank you, Chair Varela. A couple of questions about the legislation. First of all, who's sponsoring it at the state level?
So, we have Senator Jalen and Representative Sabodosa. And last time I checked, we had about four other co-sponsors on the legislation as well. So, we have a Senate bill filed and a House bill filed.
Is this the first year that you've filed?
So, last year, we filed several pieces of legislation that were similar. This is the first time that Massachusetts has This is the first time that Massachusetts has filed a bill saying we should decriminalize two grams of the molecule of psilocybin, mescaline containing cacti, Ibogaine, and DMT-containing plants, so like ayahuasca vine.
So is that decriminalizing the sale or the?
Great question. So it would not decriminalize any type of commercial exchange. So there wouldn't be this, you know, selling. It might happen already. We've heard of like health food stores across Commonwealth, like they'll have microdosing tablets. A lot of these cannabis festivals that pop up in the Boston Commons, people have little chocolates and stuff like that, too. It's kind of hard to stop that, period. Even with legal cannabis, people have THC products that they, they don't, you know, market the way they should. So basically, this would not legalize that commercially and that's important to us because we don't want to repeat a big cannabis where it's just all a bunch of out-of-state people who don't care. We want people to get this medicine from a trusted friend, from someone who's really dedicated their life to ensuring that this is going to be a profound and beneficial experience if it's for them, right?
So, okay, so what is it decriminalizing then?
Yes, so it would decriminalize possession and growing.
And growing?
Yes, yes.
All right. And you said that six communities in Massachusetts passed something. What did they pass?
A version of our measure, yes. So the first four cities, Somerville, Cambridge, Northampton, and East Hampton, have passed resolutions asking the police departments of their towns to make two things the lowest priority. First, sharing those plants I just mentioned, intheogenic plants such as psilocybin, and growing them. Importantly, growing them and sharing them without commercial intent, so not selling them. The second thing is it reaffirms a policy that, as Chief Miller alluded to, is already kind of understood policy in a lot of cities, that minor amounts of all controlled substances should also be treated as an issue of public health, referring people to, say, Middlesex County's program for people who need treatment, rather than spending the sometimes $15,000 it can take to incarcerate someone. And, you know, my brother Jason, struggling with addiction to methamphetamine and opiates, he was a huge drain on public resources. And yet, in jails, people can get methadone, people can get fentanyl if it's dripped onto a piece of paper. One of Boston's top officials was, is under investigation now for smuggling NK2, a synthetic version of cannabis that causes psychosis. So jails are not a mental health, not the mental health tool that they could be. And we've, we've spoken with the Massachusetts Sheriff's Association, for example, about how we could also potentially make Ibogaine treatments or guided psilocybin sessions available, five years, 10 years, depends how many cities we get to take this seriously.
Okay. And what were the other two communities, what did they pass?
Yes, thank you. So Worcester's Human Rights Commission passed a measure that called on the city to decriminalize plant medicines for veterans and first responders. I think the sentiment of a lot of those city councilors and commissioners is that it shouldn't just be for veterans and first responders, but it was to make a point, particularly how we lose almost 30 veterans a year to suicide across the Commonwealth every year. And then the other measure that was just passed in Amherst was a measure that signaled the town council's view that the police department should treat them as the lowest priority as well. It didn't mention all controlled substances, but it did say that the war on drugs as a whole has, has been a failure that has pitted, you know, actually hurt trusts in law enforcement rather than, you know, benefiting our, our public safety.
So just to clarify, the four communities passed something that minimized all controlled substances?
That by, by language of them said that all minor possession of controlled substances should be treated as a public health issue, yes, to de-prioritize.
What is minor possession?
It doesn't specifically define it, and I think the reason why it doesn't in some cases is so officers still have some discretion in how that policy's applied. There's pros and cons to defining amounts. When you define an amount, it, police don't necessarily know the amount of the molecule present in psilocybin mushrooms. If it's stored incorrectly, it throws off those measurements, too. It depends. And it can also reduce discretion by individual officers, which can be a good thing, just for making a law more enforceable. These types of resolutions, though, are signaling a general value that the state legislature, the voters of Massachusetts as well, should take this really seriously and get educated because it's probably not going to be another decade before we see a version of them decriminalized or legalized statewide.
Does the legislation at the state level refer to these communities in what they've passed?
It doesn't specifically refer to them in the text of the bill, but I don't think it would have been possible for us to file that legislation if it hadn't been for those cities. So the lawmakers that have really come out in support of us, they, they're, they're well aware of their communities doing that.
The, and I don't want to get too technical on the state level, but, I mean, that's why you're here, right? Like you're trying to advocate, you're trying to get support from Salem to help with the advocacy at the state level, which really is where it makes the most sense at this point. I'm putting words in your mouth, so I'll, I'll pause there for a minute, but...
Yeah, I think educating state lawmakers is one benefit. I think the primary benefit, and actually, my first slide of the presentation is not let's decriminalize plant medicine, it was let's talk about plant medicine. Because I, as cheesy as it sounds, I believe that the process here tonight, people listening in, people learning about this in the media, is actually probably the most beneficial thing about these resolutions. And I say that to having, we've knocked a lot of doors in Salem and just chatted with, chatted with folks about it. We've never had anyone who was opposed. We had one lady who wanted to eat her Grubhub and didn't want to, didn't want to talk to, she wanted to get straight to dinner. But other than that, we, you know, people were very supportive of the intention and the efforts to educate people. So I think that that's really fundamentally the most important thing. The state bill may or may not pass the session, but I think what's more important is educating community by community, yeah.
I guess just one last thing. My question, what that was leading to, was did those representatives and senators from those communities that pass this stuff sign on to the bills? Because I'm not familiar with these two.
They did. So Senator Jalen represents Medford and Somerville and parts of Cambridge, to my understanding. And then Lindsey Sabodosa represents Northampton, East Hampton, Amherst area. So you can see how that clustering worked. And then David LeBeuf, who's a state rep from Worcester, it was really powerful that even just the Human Rights Commission had put out that public statement. So it definitely, it helps educate an unimaginable amount of stakeholders who might not answer emails or might not talk about it or might be too afraid to talk about it internally. But because of this work, addiction treatment groups across the Commonwealth are having conversations we don't even know about, about the potential of Ibogaine, about the potential of psilocybin. Thank you.
Counselor Merkel, then Counselor McLean.
Thank you, Chair Varela. And I want to thank you for this presentation. It's, it's been really interesting and we do have to think of all the possibilities for, for addressing the insidious issues that we have of addiction and, and the public health crisis that it is. And my question is actually more about the actual product. One thing, you know, sometimes I feel, you know, the legalization can make for a safer product because then you can, you know, then you can have more information about what you're consuming. So I was, I had two questions. When you've talked a lot about, you know, what this can treat and the possibilities sound great, since it's in a hallucinogenic, are there lower doses that you don't actually, you know, hallucinate? I'd just like a little bit more information on the, on the actual product, just because I'm not knowledgeable and I think many people watching the meeting might not be knowledgeable as well, like me. And also, you know, one issue with illegal products is, are bad products out there, that they're not consuming, you know, what they should be consuming or what they think they're consuming. So is this a path forward to, to make, you know, a healthier, you know, product so people are consuming, you know, what, what is beneficial, you know, what you've been talking about tonight? Just, just a little bit of information along those lines to educate me. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Counselor. It's a wonderful question. So I'll break it into two parts, as you did. The first part, you mentioned small doses. So we like to refer to those as microdoses. And microdosing is basically taking about a thirtieth of what you would take for a bigger trip, for a bigger experience, which is just a small, wee little bit of mushroom. And the effects are really subperceptual. So you're not tripping, you don't have like color changes. Your day might be a little brighter and you might feel a little more creative. So if anyone's ever tried like Adderall or, you know, any of those drugs for ADHD, a lot of people use microdosing, those smaller amounts, because they feel like it makes them a little more alert and a little more focused throughout the day. Microdosing, a lot of people swear by it helping their depression as well in lower amounts that are far easier for them to understand, you know, this isn't going to be out of this world or one step in reality, one step out. It's going to be a lot more mild of an effect. And there's, there's studies showing that it's beneficial. We don't fully understand it yet, but what we do know is that under an MRI machine, someone who's taken a microdose has their entire brain lighting up. Their prefrontal cortex is communicating with their amygdala. It's all glowing, which suggests that even in small amounts, it can have some of the neurogenerative benefits, literally helping create new brain cells in people with traumatic brain injuries. I will just say, it can be used in a lot of different ways for a lot of different intentions. And microdosing is a great alternative people, people use. Your second question, if you could just remind me briefly, I'm so sorry.
Yes, just because my, my concern always with, you know, drugs that are not legal, then there ends up, you know, bad product and people don't know what they're consuming and this might be a path forward for, you know, a little, for consumers knowing and having, you know, some guidance. Like you said, they're not just purchasing this, they're getting some guidance on how and how it can be used. So just a little information on, is that an issue right now with, with how people, you know, are purchasing this and this, and having this legalization or at least decriminalization might, might help with that?
Yeah, it's a, it's a wonderful question. So I'm going to set up two extremes, just to conceptually understand this a bit. With one extreme being like hyper, hyper capitalism, they're trying to sell as much mushrooms as possible, or honestly dispensaries. A lot of cannabis dispensaries are this way, where they're not educating you about the product. It's, it's venture capital trying to maximize profits, moving from state to state now, taking advantage of states that legalize the interests that result. Those people actually serve cannabis that's pretty low quality, even though it's legal. It's got mold on it, they cut corners, they cut costs, they've gamed the regulatory system to where, you know, they're using pesticides that are potentially harmful. So that's one extreme of like, oh, it's legalized, but it's actually not necessarily a better product. On the other hand, is, you know, the complete legacy market, like free-for-all, don't know what you're getting, you can't leave them a Yelp review, you can't look them up on Google Maps and say you had a bad time, like they're on the internet, you don't know who they are. A lot of people will order mushrooms through the internet, the, the company takes their money, doesn't send them mushrooms, or sends them something like portobello mushrooms. I've heard of rare instances of that. But yeah, there's, there's definitely a product quality issue and a trust issue. And I think that we land somewhere in the middle, where we want people to be able to grow their own, so you know what you're getting. We want people to get this from their neighbor or a trusted friend, you know what you're getting. We want people, if they are getting mushrooms, to get it from potentially a group like Healthy Streets Outreach Program or another organization that has a lot of credibility and has something on the line reputationally if they're giving someone a product that's, that's subpar. So I think that that, you know, kind of rides both of those extremes of just letting whoever grow mushrooms and sell them, they don't really care, they're making money off of it, versus the other side of that, the legalized version of that, where it's, it's, you know, multi-state operators just trying to get the product out to people, too.
Thank you. That was helpful.
Of course. Thank you.
Thank you, James. And real quick, since we're on the subject, I do have a question. Sorry, Counselor McLean. When it comes to whether it be microdoses or larger doses, could Dr. Shields kind of explain a little more on a molecular level what's happening? Like, what's the benefit of psilocybin? And concerning the safety and efficacy, like how hard is it to contaminate or add something like fentanyl to a mushroom? Like, can you talk about the safety a little bit of, of these products?
Okay. In terms of adding fentanyl to anything, that's unfortunately easy. That's a problem that I believe is, is happening, or that I've, I've heard has been happening even in cannabis, not the regulated market, but the legacy market. So unfortunately, it is as easy as adding fentanyl to something because you only need a very small amount of it for it to be deadly. One thing about the varietals, so there are different medicinal types of mushrooms, even though psychedelic mushrooms are just called magic, you know, magic mushrooms, most of them are part of the psilocybe genus, but there are different types. One other advantage of decriminalization at city levels is that there is more research that gets done. And actually, it is at the state level. So Oregon and Florida are the two first states that are doing research on the different types of molecules even inside these mushrooms. So the psilocybe family of mushrooms, there's a bunch of them, a majority of them will contain active molecules like psilocybin or psilocin. And there are others that, at least five to nine, depending on which paper you're going to look at, that have an effect and they can have very different types of effects. I know James was mentioning cluster headaches, migraines, as, it's a very specific positive therapeutic effect. And so far, really early research that's been going on more on the West Coast is showing that there are very, very specific varietals of these mushrooms that are more beneficial for them. Now, we don't have as much research on them as we would like because we are not actually able to have the good access to research it. And in general, people don't have the good access to find what works for them. So speaking about microdosing, the different levels, as James was saying, like a microdose is mostly subperceptual, so you'd barely notice it. But actually, as of last year, there was a competition that was done in the legacy market out on the West Coast where they found that the most beneficial microdosing mushroom actually had a completely different profile than the most beneficial macrodosing or bigger level of mushroom. And they displayed it as like a, kind of like a pie graph that was shooting out in different directions. There's limited knowledge on exactly what piece of, each of them attributes to all of the positive effects and they're shared. There's a lot of overlap in between like what positive effects are caused because they're very, very similar molecules. But in general, yeah, microdosing is more of like a maintenance, like a very, something that is comparable like to a cup of coffee or like one drink. It's a very, very low level effect. And in terms of like feeling safe and understanding what the effects are as you get greater and greater, you really do have to get to about, I'd say, 10 times what a microdose is, 10 to 20 times before you would see any sort of like visual perception that people associate with tripping, which would be like a distortion of patterns, like maybe breathing. And if you are curious about what the effects are like, there's a couple pretty good YouTube simulations where you, we would Google, you know, YouTube simulation of psychedelic experiences. And there's, there's quite a few out there. And if you are wondering what it would be like, it's, it at least mimics some of the visual component. It can't mimic the spiritual component that you feel emotionally, but it would show you kind of what it would, what it gets like at the different doses because it really takes getting up to be, I mean, 10 to 20 to 30 times the dose of what would be a microdose before you're going to get any sort of that like hallucination and/or like an inability to function like in a lucid manner.
Thank you, Dr. Shields. Counselor McLean?
Thank you, Chair Varela. I have a lot of questions, but I'll limit myself. My first question will be for Mr. Davis and probably Chief Miller as well. And that is about each of your understanding about the current source and supply network for the substances that we're discussing, right? And so I'll, I'll follow on the comparisons that you've made to the cannabis industry. When cannabis was decriminalized and then legalized, most people had a really common understanding already of sort of the breadth of the customer base, the supply network that was involved, where it was coming from. So what does that look like, as far as you know, for the plant medicines we're discussing this evening?
Counselor, in my...
Counselor, in my roughly 35 years of law enforcement, all of the arrests that I've seen, all of the psilocybin seized has been relatively small quantities. I, I realize there is a sort of a mail order business, but the, the the cases that I've been involved in or, or peripherally aware of have tended to be people cultivating locally.
Yeah, I, I agree with that characterization of, of just all the folks that I've met doing this work. I, I didn't even know where to get mushrooms when I just moved to Massachusetts. And I've learned just so much by meeting people who are enthusiastic and have had their lives changed. I'll follow up to, to something Dr. Shields mentioned with, with fentanyl. There was a report in Vermont that someone who was selling both cannabis and fentanyl didn't clean their scales right and fentanyl got on the cannabis. And it led to this very big media hysteria that, you know, everyone's cannabis is, is gonna get cut with fentanyl. In my understanding, the types of people who sell fentanyl are very, on, at least on average, there's always exceptions, are very different than the types of people who, who grow mushrooms and share mushrooms. Like just philosophically very different types of, of personalities. And fentanyl, you know, there are people who are just dependent on fentanyl, they're using, they're using it regularly because they're struggling with substance use. And fentanyl is sometimes given to people who are using something like heroin, sometimes for a targeted assassination on the, on the legacy market to, you know, take out someone who they find annoying or pestering or dangerous. In other cases, you know, they think that they can get people more hooked on to what they're selling. So they'll cut ecstasy, they'll cut other compounds with fentanyl really tragically because sometimes the person will just get addicted, other times they'll stop breathing and, and have an OD. So I think with psilocybin, particularly the product, I suppose that you could put fentanyl on anything. Hot dog, like you could put it on anything theoretically. I haven't heard of fentanyl being dusted on the actual product of mushrooms. Liquids, I guess, could be mixed up accidentally inadvertently, maybe purposely for nefarious reasons with fentanyl. I just haven't, I haven't read that being very common at all. So the fact that fentanyl could be put on something isn't a reason. If anything, it's a reason for us to have transparency where it's like, we know someone here in Salem's growing, that a few people are growing mushrooms and they're sharing them around, but they're not, you know, a shroom store, they're not making hand over fist, and they're not a conventional drug dealer where it's like you get, it's a one-stop shop for your narcotics where there are people selling more than, than one thing. And, and maybe the chief can, can speak to that more. The types of profiles of people who deal drugs and sell drugs is complicated. Generally, psilocybin people and home growers are very different personalities than people who sell opiates.
Thank you for that. Um, I probably am going to avoid trying to characterize who sells what drugs and who consumes what drugs. I don't think, I don't think anything good lies down that pathway. But I do want to continue your conversation about management of risk. I think that's, that's an important piece of the conversation. And, um, I'm not particularly looking at that in the context of the physical risk, though I think that's real. People do have adverse reactions to substances that are not always predictable and you'll never get to zero on that. But, um, I did, in the course of listening to your presentation, hear you and, and see some statist, some statistics relative to the powerful impact that psilocybin in particular can have even at a single use of administration. And that really gave me some pause. That gave me some pause because I think what you do see and what is sort of the desirable effect of a medicine like this, of a substance like this, is that while it may not have an adverse physical reaction, it often has a really powerful and provokes a really powerful emotional response for people. And the reason, in my understanding, that it's effective at treating addiction is because addiction is frequently rooted in pain and trauma, right? And as your trauma manifests, it compounds. And so I'm really concerned about the idea of people thinking that therapeutic practice can occur in a context where it is single use or at home. That's not my understanding of therapeutic practice. I've been to some therapy, they usually get more than one session. And so I really want to ask you what you see as the end game for this. I understand your comments about what is currently pending at the State House in terms of the amount that you're looking to have decriminalized for possession. But I'm trying to understand how we get to a point where we are promoting the clinical and therapeutic practices that we're talking about that are going to allow it to be used for addiction intervention. I'm not, I'm not seeing that link to what needs to go into the regulation. So like, if you could wave a magic wand and make the regulations that you want today, what would it look like? And how does that get us to that spot? What are you saying we should have in and out?
That's an amazing question and we agree with a lot of the premises you outlined about it being an extremely powerful experience emotionally as well. That's why real, it's really important we get it right. And we have a crippling shortage of mental health care providers, period, across the board. We don't have enough therapists, we don't have enough therapists that meet particular cultural identities as well. Diaspora peoples, uh, people from lower income backgrounds. It's, it's harder to get all those certificates on your wall. And we saw the consequences of this leaving the pandemic where there were wait lines to see a therapist, 10 or 20 people, which is why we believe that with proper education, with something like our facilitator network, which is free, but people who have a background check, people who we vetted and put some state regulation on that, we, we welcome it. But what I don't want to see happen is all of these therapists who are already just seeing normal, ordinary, you know, they're not using psychedelics, they just need a talk therapist, they're exiting practice to go serve a wealthy clientele that's demanding psychedelic therapy. And so that brain drain from our conventional mental health care system, if you set the regulations excessively, that's only gonna benefit people who can pay $2,000 or sometimes $15,000 for this type of care. And that's not to say that type of care shouldn't exist. For some people, that's appropriate. Sometimes a retreat to Peru for an ayahuasca experience will be appropriate. But to make this truly accessible for a lot of the Americans that are living paycheck to paycheck, don't have $500 for an emergency expense, we're gonna have to think innovatively. And this is how we do it. We educate as much as possible because we know people are gonna do this anyway, regardless of what the law says. Second, we set up different facilitator networks with reputable groups where people can always go and see like, is this a good idea for me to do this at all? Am I gonna have the proper sentence setting for an experience? And if the answer is yes, they sit with someone. Honestly, when you're tripping, you don't, some people like to talk, a lot of people just want to be inside their own heads. So they really just want to relax in that, in that calm environment at home and explore the contours of their consciousness. And that neuroplasticity, like there's that visual response that, that Dr. Shields mentioned. A lot of the benefits, like you said, comes from actually getting the therapy after and getting counseling after. Calling that mentor from high school after and asking them about that big decision you have ahead of yourself. But you can do that in the week following so that we're not draining away mental health care providers that are already serving low income and moderate income people for normal talk therapy. And so that's, that's my worry. If we overregulate this, if we, if we appoint a board to write 5,000 pages of rules, we saw that in Oregon and the types of people who got themselves on that committee are selling the training to the therapists. So we have, we have therapists all the time, sign up for our facilitator network, they want to learn, they actually want to meet people and help them. They've, they've been price gouged out the wazoo around this excitement, around psychedelics and they've paid big bucks for these expensive trainings. I think that knowledge should be pretty democratized. And creating separate licensing has its, has its own risks around affordability. Should we have rules? I, I think so. But you want the rules where they should be, not way up here because it creates a Wild West effect where people are gonna be doing it anyway. Hope that makes sense.
Yeah, that made a lot of sense. So my follow up to that, I, I guess will be for Dr. Shields. Of the, hi.
Hi.
Of the amount of research that's currently being conducted, do you have a sense how much of that research is focused on the therapeutic intersections, the clinical applications for these kinds of medicines versus sort of the molecular function? Is there a set of, is there a set of standards or a set of best practices beginning to emerge in terms of the type of training and experience that it's important for a facilitator to have in the administration of these kinds of medicines?
Yeah, so just generally the question of clinical versus like what basic science, which is what my forte is. In general, the skew is usually about like 98% clinical because that's more relevant to, to all of us, the human population, and like 2% of basic science. So there's definitely basic science being done. I have former colleagues that are at Northeastern, now they're everywhere because we all graduated and grew up. And I have colleagues that are working in the basic science level and they are working on developing new analogs, developing new derivatives, like in the pharmaceutical sense. And that exists in one route, right, of what would be our pharmaceutical drug discovery, developing new molecules. And then in terms of the 98% of the clinical research that's being done on establishing dose protocols, learning about whether or not certain people are more sensitive or not, learning about like medicine interactions that we know in theory happen, but we should know more in reality. Learning how to screen patients before and figure out whether or not they're a good fit and have really regulated protocols of like who does and doesn't fit that. Do I think that there are best practices that everyone agrees upon? Like, no. I don't think that everyone, and I also don't know that there's any practice universally agreed upon except for maybe like checking your heart rate and blood pressure regularly. I think that that tends to be a contentious thing, especially when you talk about mental health, right? We have psychiatrists, psychologists and licensed therapists for a reason. Those are three different ways of looking at mental health, those are three different ways of treating mental health. And so for that same reason, I don't think that there is a universal agreement. In addition to that, we are all different, every human is different. And so every person is or may benefit from a different type of protocol. Are there microdosing protocols that have been established and been tested by many, many people? Yeah, one of them is the Fadiman Protocol and he's actually, I think he lives in Cambridge. The other one is the Stamis Protocol. And both of those have to do with microdosing. So those are low levels and they're basically a dose schedule of like how often you do and don't take them. I personally don't advocate for either of those dose schedules for anyone because I don't think that it's a one fit, like one thing fit all. I agree with James that I think that education and community is really the place where people will find the most benefit because the biggest benefit is going to be to learn to listen to your own body, to learn to track and to learn to understand and to have both peer mentors and professional mentors. And there are professional mentors that exist. I actually currently, I'm currently in a class that starts in a couple hours that is full of MDs, psychologists, licensed mental health practitioners, scientists like myself, all learning about the spiritual, emotional component of psychedelics and how like the shamanism and traditional medicine ceremonies are part of the healing that is not really well encompassed by traditional medicine. And so there's tons of experts that do exist and that have their own way of doing all this. But as of right now, there isn't a unified form of being taught. And that's another reason why it gets complicated with establishing licensing procedures because the way that you would really create that is you would have to create something like a trusted force within a community that would make a decision upon that. And do I, do I think that there's enough information out there that there could, that it could be drafted? Like absolutely. But I think that it would probably need to be done on a basis that is community by community and by use by use. And also looking at what you are trying to treat because it would be different if you're trying to treat someone for, something we didn't bring up is end of life care. But psychedelics have been shown to be really, really beneficial for people towards the end of life, accepting end of life and, um, coming to terms with it so that it's not fear-based and not a horrible thing. And that, that's a very different experience than someone who's struggling with substance use disorders. And that's a very different experience than someone who's struggling with crippling anxiety or chronic depression. So I do think that, I do think that it's possible to establish, like set standards and rules. I don't think that there is something that I could Google for you right now that would bring it up immediately. But I do know that there are many organizations that have their own version of it.
Sure, thank you. That class sounds amazing, by the way.
It's okay, it's good so far.
So my final question, uh, you sort of spoke to the opaque nature of some of the pharmaceutical funding and that being part of the sort of gap in available research that you showed us in the final graph. Who is sponsoring the, uh, the research in these plant medicines that allowed it to have so many studies done? Yeah?
To my knowledge, one of the biggest funders is MAPS, which is, I think James Fadiman's original group. Am I right in speaking? Did, did MAPS, was MAPS founded by him?
Rick Doblin.
Rick Doblin, okay, thank you. MAPS is the Multi-Disciplined, yeah, Multidisciplinary Association for Psychedelic Studies. They also fund a lot of cannabis studies as well. They're one of the bigger organizations who funds the studies. My study was actually funded in joint by a cannabis, by a cannabis company that does research tangentially to psychedelics in a partnership with a church that is a religious, spiritual, that, that's also why the data has to do with more like the spiritual experience. So it kind of is, it, it kind of depends. A lot of the psychedelic research is done not here and in different countries, in which case they have a way more open structure of getting their funding from their country funding. So also, okay, for example, in the US, we are funded by the federal government, so we aren't able to do research. In Switzerland, you can do research on any substance, like it's not regulated the same way that the research is regulated here. So in my former lab, when I was doing my PhD, there was 10mg of THC that was in a locked box, in a locked freezer behind a locked door. And the DEA would come and see that we still had that 10mg of THC, right? Like because that's how regulated it is to study a Schedule I substance here. And that it makes it equally difficult to get grant funding here for it. Versus in other countries, it's not regulated for research specifically that way. And just for context, 10mg of THC is the average dose in one little edible, like gummy or bite of chocolate. And so here, at least the one, the studies that I have seen so far, a lot of them, I've seen a lot of community-based studies. I've seen a lot of, um, research institutions. My former alma mater just announced that they invested a couple million dollars in establishing a psychedelic research center. So go UC Davis. There is universities that are investing pieces of their endowment because they see that this is the future and that this can help a huge amount of people. And that there's enough research that we know exactly where we should go with it if it were to become more available to continue doing it. And I would be amiss to say, I, I, that pharmaceutical funding isn't also involved in these, um, studies because a lot of the time, decriminalization of these psychedelics will help the cause of a pharmaceutical derivative or something that is very, very similar. Not always the case, but it is true that there is sort of a disconnect here between like the natural plant medicine and a psychopharmaceutical like derivative. And a good amount of the clinical research, a lot of it can be and is tracked towards a more pharmaceutical route for psychedelics, which I think is an option that should be available, but I disagree with because of accessibility and health equity.
Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Shields. Uh, before we open a public comment, I would like to hear from Mr. O'Connor of Cambridge Biotherapies. To give a little background, uh, he's a VP of Operations. They focus on patient-focused treatments for mood, anxiety disorders using ketamine, TMS and psychedelic therapy. Thank you, Brendan.
Thank you so much.
I'm sorry, real quick, you spare your name and address.
Absolutely. Yeah, it's Brendan O'Connor. I'm at 211 Rantoul Street, right over the bridge in Beverly. And, uh, thank you so much for the time. Uh, I'll be brief. But to summarize what you've heard tonight from, uh, my colleagues over here and, uh, and yeah, and Chief Miller as well, which I really appreciate the commentary. So we learned that entheogens have therapeutic benefits for mental health disorders. We learned that criminalization results in unjust prosecutions and imprisonment. We learned that decriminalization allows for scientific research. And other cities and states have already decriminalized entheogens. And decriminalization means treating drug use as a public health issue instead of a criminal one. Furthermore, harm reduction strategies can be implemented. And this is a compassionate and evidence-based approach. So then you'd say, well, what does that have to do with the clinical side of things? So you asked a really good question. So you asked a really good question about that, and there were another few. So what I'd like to do is, first and foremost, I will speak to the clinical side of what it looks like to offer psychedelic therapy. I'm not a licensed clinician, I'm on the operations side. So I helped make this happen, which has gotten me very close to the actual, on-the-ground what's involved to make this happen in a safe way. So I will speak to that. And just to underscore, I am absolutely in support of decriminalization as a first move. That is the first step. And then allowing this to be prescribable and putting in a legal framework allows the clinical piece to come in. So these are two pieces to the puzzle. Decriminalization definitely needs to come first. So I love the legislation. I read through the resolution. I think this is absolutely on the right path. So, all right, clinically, did I get ahead of the game? All right, okay. I will share --
[inaudible]
Well, I read the resolution from, so I was at one of the founding members of Decriminalize Nature Massachusetts. So we, this is pre-clinical. We worked on the legislation alongside Bay Stateers for Cambridge, Somerville, and a couple other cities. I am no longer involved with that. I chose to go into the clinical side, but that might have been why I said, all right, what legislation is there? And my understanding is that there is the Cambridge legislation that's out there. So I would just use that as a good framework. So, okay, for a psychedelic therapy protocol, what we do is we have a patient who comes to us, and we're going to start with a psychiatric evaluation. So that's with one of our prescribers. So that is a typically full-hour-long assessment after they've already provided all their medical history, where the psychiatrist or psych NP is really deeply getting to know this patient in terms of their history, in terms of their indications, and reviewing a lot of the possibilities, right, in terms of what treatment methods are out there. So after that discussion is had, and both the prescriber and the patient agrees that psychedelic therapy would be a good option for them, then they would proceed to start that. And what this currently looks like, and I'll echo Dr. Shields' comments, that this is a very iterative approach, right? Clinically, this is all fairly new. So will this be the same protocol a year from now? I highly doubt it. Will this be the same protocol for when we're allowed to prescribe psilocybin? I doubt it. But this is the current approach for ketamine, which acts as a psychedelic in certain doses. So we have the psyche eval. From there, it's six weeks. And this kind of speaks to your comment of, is it a one-and-done, big-bang approach? Clinically, we've found that's actually not true. So in certain cases, yes, you can have this magic occur. But for deep healing to occur, especially in traumatized patients, you really need this longer, more intensive protocol. And so on a weekly basis, once a week for six weeks, we're having them come in for a psychedelic therapy session that is accompanied by at least an hour or more of psychotherapy, right? So those are joint and one. And that psychotherapy can occur, you know, at the point, at the time of administration, or it can occur the next morning, for example. So we have two models depending on what's feasible. So they would have that experience, go deeply inwards, work through the trauma, or the anxiety, or the depression, or a lot of other things that are elements of the human experience, right? And oftentimes, what we've heard is described as five years of therapy in six weeks. And so you can have this greatly depressed timeline, which is great from an efficacy and a public health standpoint, because you're able to break through so much more content so quickly. And so repeat that for six weeks, and then after that, there's a follow-up, at which point, yo, how's it been going? What makes sense is the next step. We recommend that all the patients have ongoing relationships with a therapist, right? So this is adjunctive treatment, right, to their standard therapy, but it's a very powerful adjunctive treatment. So we're very proud to be on the leading edge of offering this, and, you know, I just thank again for this consideration. So I'm also happy to take some questions here.
Thank you, Brendan. Anyone have any questions for Mr. O'Connor? Counselor McLean?
Thank you. How do patients typically arrive at your doorstep? Are they referred to you by another practitioner? Where do they come from?
Great question. So Cambridge Biotherapies in particular has been around for about six years in Cambridge. We just opened up in Amherst as well. And over those five or six years, we've developed a really high sense of trust with other providers in the area. So the number-one source that people find us is through their therapists or psychiatrists referring to us. You know, we're not competing with them. We treat them as a treatment team. So they say, hey, you know, I've heard you all offer ketamine or TMS therapy. I have a patient who I think could be a good candidate. And then we work with them to figure out if that's indeed the case, and we'll work from there.
Thank you. Before we open up the public comment, as all of the counselors know, yes, we are working on a resolution, but I felt that it would be appropriate that we do have this formal meeting to really flesh out what everyone's thinking. So with that, we'll discuss that later. So I'd like to open up for a public comment. Thank you. If you could state your name and address for the record.
Hi, my name's Matt Stella. I live at 22 Oliver Street here in Salem. This is my first time in these chambers, and I'm here in a very impromptu kind of capacity. I just barely heard about this from my friend and colleague Brendan O'Connor. And I want to thank the council committee for being open to this really important public health conversation, in my opinion. And thanks so much to James for such a really rigorously researched position that he articulated, and Dr. Shields for your incredible presentation of the science behind it. And I just love Salem. I love raising my daughters here. It's such an awesome town in so many ways. And my neighbor, Chief Miller across the common, I love that I live in a city where you participate in a discourse like this, and you have a firm hand on the risk tolerance around public safety, and yet are so open-minded and reasonable to really consider the important factors in an issue like psychedelic medicine. I'm here speaking as a mental health clinician. My office is right across the street here in downtown. I have a private practice as a psychotherapist, and the kind of clients I work with and patients have long-term mental health issues related usually to trauma and complex PTSD. Complex, meaning someone that has not just a single incident trauma like a car accident, and then they have PTSD, they're afraid to drive, talking about people that are affected by childhood developmental trauma, a neglectful parent, an abuse in the neighborhood that happens over time. It affects your development. So as a person, you have anxiety or depression or other symptoms based on the way you are treated. Helping someone that has complex trauma as a therapist like I am is very rewarding in the big picture and a complete slog. It is slow-going. It is incremental healing, and it is worth it. And patients that want to heal and recover from trauma think nothing of being on pharmaceutical psychotropic medications, antidepressants, antipsychotics, and mood stabilizers for years and years. Think nothing of it. If it'll help them, they'll take it. And those medications do help manage symptoms. Helping manage symptoms is a godsend. Getting therapy from colleagues like mine is a godsend, and the going is slow. Psychedelic medicine is so promising because it's a different model of healing. It's the difference between managing symptoms for years and years, where you still have the symptoms but you're managing them, versus transformation and healing where you're liberated from your past, and you get to have a new body. You get to respond differently in the world. You get to feel a sense of safety. You get to not tense up and react to things. Can you imagine the difference between transformation versus management? And psychedelic medicines are non-addictive, low-risk, and transformational in the right context. And what I can use legally at my disposal right now is ketamine, and it's really amazing. It's a game changer. And it's also a placeholder for something like a plant medicine that's natural from Mother Nature, like psilocybin, that goes even deeper, and the transformation is even more lasting. And so I cannot wait. As a clinician who cares so much about my patients, I cannot wait to use the tools like a plant medicine like psilocybin. So this resolution will be one step in that direction that I really strongly endorse. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Stella. Would anyone else like to step up for public comment? Okay, we do not see any raised hands on Zoom World because of the link here. All right. So with that, thank you, everybody who participated tonight, really appreciate it. I think this is an important conversation going forward, and we can't do without you. It's really about assisted therapy should be the forefront of why we're doing this and overall education on the matter. So with that, if I could have a motion, oh, Counselor Cohen.
I'm sorry, it's just we had speakers, and I didn't know if we were allowed to ask a follow-up question after we had heard one of the additional, or?
Absolutely.
Is that okay?
Please.
Okay, thank you. Because I just found it really interesting when you talked. One thing that was kind of telling to me was it sounded like a very quick alternative, and I know how long therapy can take, but then you also spoke, and our public comment spoke to, kind of being an adjunctive treatment to regular therapy. So I find that really interesting as someone who had gone through the long slog of years of treatment and medication for trauma. My question is, then, is this something you do simultaneously? Like, you still would use the, you know, kind of the low-grade stabilizers that are traditional, but then if this is kind of an adjunct treatment, then this would enhance that kind of conventional treatment? Or is it an either-or that you do at your clinic? I'd be just really, really interested in that. Thank you.
Yeah, it's a fantastic question. So the answer is going to depend on the substance. So for ketamine, for us right now, most of our patients are on existing psychiatric medications. So ketamine does not contraindicate with those. However, psilocybin, MDMA, certainly ayahuasca, do have some contraindications of various psychiatric meds. So it's going to be very case-by-case, and we're going to need really thorough research to help us understand exactly what those are so that we can administer them safely. And that's kind of like what the FDA trials are for, right? So I think that also comes down to the importance of education through decriminalization, right? Because if you have mushrooms out there and MDMA and other, you know, entheogens, well, people need to know, you know, okay, is it okay if I can take this based on the meds that I'm on, right? So that's a safety thing, certainly. So, and then finally, I'll say, you know, personally, I've had tremendous spiritual and just well-being and growth as an individual outside of therapy. So I don't happen to have a longstanding therapeutic relationship with a licensed therapist. I probably should, and I'm interested in that, but as I think everyone should. I think it's good. But what I mean by that is, it doesn't have to be. So I'd hate for this to become something that, you know, you must have a therapist too. That's also the wrong direction. We want to go in the way of flexibility, right? There can be a lot of, you know, at-home, responsible, safe use. That can be very therapeutic, and then they can tap into their existing therapist for integration perhaps, right? So there's just tons of different models with this.
Awesome. Thank you, Mr. O'Connor. Counselor Cohen?
Thank you, Chair Varela. I move that we keep this in committee.
All right. Have a second. Counselor Cohen would like to make a motion remaining committee, seconded by Counselor All those in favor of keeping it in committee? I see three hands plus my own. Matter carries, staying committee. Oh, sorry, sorry, four. Sorry, four plus my own. All right, Counselor Cohen.
I move that we adjourn.
Seconded by Counselor Merkel. Meeting is adjourned. Thank you, everybody.